That's a member Taylor, I don't think we've done the sound check. Just want to double check.
You're okay.
Check, can you hear me Will?
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Perfect.
Councilmember Clark, if I could ask you to do the same, give me a mic check just briefly.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ben, can we hear you real quick?
I'm here.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Called order this July 6th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. And pursuant to the city adopted policy regarding remote meetings, I've determined that it's not feasible for the city council to attend this meeting physically. Therefore, all council members are participating virtually. Council members will vote with a roll call vote and each member will be recognized and they will raise their hand and indicate a vote orally. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Larson?
Present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bessie?
Here.
Councilmember Cipio?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Here.
Councilmember Harmon?
Here.
Thank you very much, would you please join the city council in a meeting in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Tonight's meeting of the city council is comprised of the following items, we have two items related to the CARES Act grant funds, we have eight rezoning petitions, there's an item adopting a disadvantaged business enterprise program, an item adopting a Title VI plan as well as a public comment period. The zoning petitions, disadvantaged business enterprise program, and the Title VI plan are listed as public hearings. When these public hearings are called, I'll give the person on the call an opportunity to speak virtually. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, the proponents and the opponents will be each given 15 minutes for presentations and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the city council will consider the item. It should be noted that written comments will be accepted to the public hearing items until 7:00 PM tomorrow, that's July 7th. And they may be sent to the city clerk's office at PO Box 2511, 27102, or by email to sandrark@cityofws.org. The written comments, if there are any, will be forwarded to the mayor and the city council members. And if desired, the appropriate city council person may, based on those written comments, make a motion to reconsider an item at a social meeting. The public comment period is a time set aside for citizens to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government. And when this virtual comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes to make their comment. And the total comment period is 30 minutes. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13. And it will be replayed on Tuesday at 9:00 AM and again Wednesday at 9:00 PM. Copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, www.cityofws.org, and click on the watch meetings online option. Councilmembers, I understand from Mayor Pro Tim Adams that she wishes to continue item Z10. So without objection, we'll go to item Z10 first. City clerk would read that item, please.
Item Z10, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Industry Hill Properties LLC, IH850 Trade LLC, from LI to EL. Property is located on the north side of West Eighth Street, between North Trade Street and Oak Street. Located in the North Ward, Board recommends denial of petition.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams, if you'd like to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I move to continue item Z10 to the city council meeting to be held on August 3rd, 2020.
Second. Motion and second, we'll now do the roll call, Member Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Member Harmon?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll now return to the regular agenda. We have item Z1, please.
Item Z1, Resolution Authorizing Application Submission for North Carolina CARES Act Grant Funds, Acceptance of CARES Act Grant Funds, Execution of Agreements with North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and Execution of Agreements with Local Homeless Service Provider Agency.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Tasha Logan Ford, would you give us just a very brief summary of this particular resolution?
Good evening, Mayor joins, Mayor Tim Adams and members of council. Items Z1 and Z2 both relate to CARES Act funding and emergency solutions grants to support efforts in the homeless community. And I would ask Marla Newman, our Community Development Director, if you would provide a brief on both of those items?
Mr. Newman?
Good evening, Mayor joins, members of the council, Mayor Pro Tim Adams. As stated, this is the first of two items relative to the CARES Act. The CARES Act funding comes to us in two ways. Direct, as a participating jurisdiction, we receive allocation straight from HUD. But also, in this particular instance, we receive money through the State Department of Health and Human Services from the allocation that comes to states. This particular item before you is to allow us to actually apply to the Department of Health and Human Services for $712,943 to be used for, again, serving and supporting those who are experiencing homelessness. These funds have some specific uses that have been requested of the participants and the applicants for this funding. The information we received from the state requires that a minimum of 60% of these funds be used for what they call housing stability, which in our instance, we use for rapid rehousing and homelessness prevention. I will direct your attention, there are a lot of documents, of course, in your packet, but you will find that in the exhibit number two, there is a table two which actually breaks down and describes what each of these particular types of funding are. So you'll see us describing what rapid rehousing is, homelessness prevention. So it really tells us the scope in which we can actually utilize these funds. What we've done is look at the various priorities we have based on the uptake we've seen in connection with the medically fragile shelter, with the number of occupied beds in the shelter. And we've determined that in order to meet the state stipulation of 60%, that we would concentrate our efforts in three areas. Two, which would comprise that 60% are made up of rapid rehousing, which we are proposing, and you'll see on table one, page two of the CARF. Table one outlines rapid rehousing for an amount of $285,177. And then for homelessness prevention, in the amount of $142,589. Combined those two figures are $427,766. And that is 60% of that $712,943. The balance of that would be used for emergency shelter operations and services. You find in the packet, I've given both, this particular review of the potential ways of spending the money, we would still have to, once given permission to apply, then correspond with the members of the homeless services network, the shelter providers, and actually receive applications for the utilization of these funds. But we communicate in that RFP with them what the priorities are as stated by the state, and then our priorities in an attempt to mirror what the state is requesting. Then you'll also see, we have other allocations that, you'll see, table two talks about what you all approved back in May. And then there is another table, a couple of tables that list in totality the amounts of funds that will be coming to us by way of the CARES Act and then our annual allocations of funding. In total, we are looking in the next year or so to have expended about $7,881,822, $7,881,822 in support of those who are experiencing homelessness. Again, part of that is from the CARES Act, part of that is local monies, particularly $700,000 that you all allocated in May to support the medically fragile shelter. And then part of it is general operations and so forth that we get annually from HUD.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, that's impressive figure there, the $7,821,000 there. Are there any questions for Ms. Newman?
Mayor?
Councilmember Clark?
When do you think, if we were to get it, when will we know by?
And this $712,000, the application deadline for that is Friday, July 17th. We would expect that we would know something probably within 30 days.
Okay, so we could maybe have the money by early September then, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes, Ms. Newman, how long will we have these funds for use? Is there a timetable that they have to be used by?
Yes, ma'am, we have until 2022 to actually expend all of the funds. However, we're, because we are really focused on trying to move people from shelters to permanent housing, it is our goal to try to get these dollars expended within 12 to 18 months at the max. We are really focusing our efforts on true housing stability.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I would recognize the Chairman of our Housing General Government Committee, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, if she is comfortable to move this item forward for the motion?
Yes. Members, Mayor and members of the city council, I move that we accept item Z1, a resolution authorizing for the care funds.
Second. Thank you, motion and second, for the roll call, Member Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Thank you, that's unanimous, thank you, go to item Z2.
Item Z2, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance of CARES Act Grant Funds, Execution of Agreements with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and Execution of Agreements with Local Homeless Service Provider Agency.
Thank you, again, may I call on Assistant City Manager Ford for comments and Ms. Newman, if necessary?
Mayor joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of council, I would direct the question to Ms. Newman. I would like to share with council as relates to our homeless population and the medical health that has been established. I think this month, we will start the process phasing that service out with the continuum of care. But I did want to let the council members know that we have 49 individuals that are currently in that shelter. Forty-six of those have submitted application for permanent housing, the continuum of care is working through that process. And we have about 17 of those individuals that have been approved for housing thus far. So with that, I'll ask Ms. Newman if she would provide any comments on item Z2 related to this funding.
Ms. Newman?
Thank you, Mayor joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the council. This particular item enables us to allocate the monies that have come to us or targeted for us directly from HUD, as I mentioned in the first item. This particular item covers two tranches of money. The first is the CARES Act II, the larger allocation of dollars, $2,47,257. And then the second piece of this is CDBG COVID-1 money, so the first round of CDBG dollars in the amount of $1,1,580. One of the things in particular I'll direct your attention to, if you look on the second page of the table one, CARES Act, the agencies. We were allotted $1.3 million of CDBG funds leading up until May, when we got our first round of ESG dollars. In the action that was taken in May, we actually allocated $299,000 of that CDBG dollars to go along with the ESG that was in the first round, so that we could spread more of our services around to meet full needs. This particular item enables us now to program or allocate the remaining $1,001,000, as I mentioned, for use. As you'll see, we are proposing, under table three, which is on page three of the CARF, we're proposing the utilization of that $1 million for permanent supportive housing, so for actual physical housing units. And then with the CARES Act II, again, looking at rapid rehousing, homelessness prevention. And then we also have the ability, if there's an opportunity, to allocate some of the dollars for shelter renovation or conversion. One of the things that we learned during the pandemic is that we did not have sufficient facilities to isolate people who may have been COVID positive or waiting for COVID test results. And so this could provide an opportunity for conversion of a shelter or renovation of a shelter to maybe create space that could be used for isolation in an infectious disease circumstance. Again, the similar information that was provided for the state allocation is also attached in this particular exhibit. And if I could draw your attention to, again, it's in exhibit two, table one, that's where it breaks down all of the funds that, again, will support our continuum of care, be it through CARES Act, through the state funds, as well as through our local dollars that were used to support the medically fragile shelter, and then our annual allocations from HUD. One item I would like to draw your attention to, and I apologize for the typographical error, in the final line where it says local funds slash FEMA, that figure should have been $700,000, which is the full three months to operate the medically fragile shelter. We had estimated from back when we opened the shelter that we would be spending approximately $229,000 a month. And unfortunately, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that when I made the adjustments in the other document. So again, total funding, when we combine all of the sources, is $7,881,822. And you'll see the notes on the right side of that column that explain to you whether we're waiting on a grant agreement from HUD, if funds have been committed, and so forth and so on. So that kind of gives you a legend of where we stand and what needs to happen going forward.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Newman, are there any questions of Ms. Newman on this particular item? Councilperson Cipio?
Yes. Ms. Newman, it's a lot of money for the homeless. Are there some needs that are not being met in our community even though we have these funds right now where they are allocated because of the restrictions on where the money is?
So two areas, I think, that we are struggling to address. One is how we make adequate provision for housing for those who are returning citizens or who have a criminal record. Talking with staff today, one of the things that we discussed, and I've encouraged staff to do, is reach out to the reentry council to see if we can establish some kind of working relationship to do a better job. Recently, as Ms. Logan Ford mentioned about the medically fragile shelter and the number of people who've made applications, so that when they leave that shelter, when it stands down the end of the month, and the goal always, when they went into that shelter, was that they would exit into permanent housing. One of the things that we've noticed, looking at the case management reports weekly, are the number of people who have had some involvement with the criminal justice system. And so we're really needing to make sure that that particular group gets the support and attention that they need because sometimes they have particular barriers to overcome that many others may not. But another area that's a little bit more difficult for us to address, but I do think it is pertinent, and that is the need for mental and behavioral health supports. That's out of our bailiwick, but we recognize that that is a huge need. And we're continuing to have conversations within the department about what are the opportunities for us to do some linkage with some other social service entities or others who can provide support in the Mental Health and Behavioral Health Department.
Does this money also have that 2022 timetable?
Yes, the federal money does. Now, of course, you know, the $2 million and the $1 million, yes, we have those same kinds of deadlines, utilization of that. Again, especially with the CDBG money for the permanent supportive housing, we're hoping that sometime in the fall, at the latest, we could come to you with a proposal to actually develop a small project, maybe an eight to 10 unit or something. But we're still making sure that all of our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted before we do that. But one of the things we recognize is, it's sometimes it's difficult to have developers come and offer to develop the kinds of units that we need to best serve our community. And so we're exploring how we can do a better job of getting developers to the table who can actually address the needs that we have, rather than we being responsive to the needs that they may have because they are submitting tax credit applications and the like. Because tax credit units don't necessarily serve those who are 30%, 50% of area median income, which is where a lot of those who are experiencing homelessness fall or find themselves in terms of income.
Right, thank you, Ms. Newman, any other questions? All right, I would again recognize Councilmember Adams for, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Adams for a motion.
Yes, mayors and members of council, I move for the adoption of Z2, a resolution authorizing acceptance of the CARES Act grant funds.
Second. Second, any discussion? The roll call, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bessie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous, we'll go to item Z3.
Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of William Lincoln Dixon, from RS9 to Orange Oil Pass. Property is located on the east side of Alstons Berry Road and south side of Jay Avenue, located in the South Ward, planning for a permanent public facility.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, Mr. King, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this one?
Mayor joins, we have one speaker, it is the applicant Dennis Tharrington, we have no one signed up in opposition.
All right, since there's no one in opposition, unless Mr. Tharrington just wants to speak, we'll close the public hearing and consider the item.
I would just make one comment, I was listening to-
Please give your name and address for the record, Mr. Turner.
My name is Dennis Tharrington, and I live at 112 West Lake Drive in Henderson, North Carolina. And I am a developer, and I've done about six of these types of facilities. And my comment was going to be on the previous speaker that said that she had a hard time finding developers that developed properties that would be as low as 30% of the median income. We developed anywhere from 30% to 80% of the median income, so I would be interested in that.
Very good, well, thank you for your investment in our city. I recognize Councilmember Larson for a motion, if he's ready. Public hearing, I think.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim. Think for clarity of this particular case, because it does, I have received some comments from the Neighborhood Alliance and other neighborhood organizations, it might be useful for everybody to sort of understand what this is about. Because I think there's a basic philosophical question that has to be answered by the city that is not in compliance with legacy or with the area plan. So let's get it clear as to what-
Can you give us a brief presentation?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, Mayor joins, I'll ask Amy Crum on our staff to pull up the slideshow for case 3437, and we will jump right into this, and I'll run through that very quickly for you guys.
Thank you.
All right, can everyone see the slides on the screen, okay?
Yes.
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 Great, go ahead, Amy, to the next slide, please. All right, so here's the location map of the subject property shown in yellow, it's about almost nine acres in size. And this is on the east side of Old Salisbury Road. And it's just south of West Clemensville Road and Stafford Village Boulevard that you can see there at the top of this image. You can see the zoning in this area is primarily RS9, single-family zoning in this area. Next slide. Here is an aerial photograph of the subject property, you can see it is currently wooded and undeveloped. Next slide, please. Just a couple images taken on site, this is looking north on Old Salisbury Road, the site will be to the right in this image. Next slide. This is on Jay Avenue, this is along the northern edge of the site. This is looking from Jay Avenue, looking toward Old Salisbury Road, the subject property will be to the left in this image. Next slide. And this is kind of from the same vantage point, looking across Jay Avenue with the existing home in the area. Next slide. This is looking at the South Suburban Area Plan Update, which was adopted in 2017. And you can see the subject property outline there, and it is recommended for single-family residential, up to eight dwelling units per acre. You can see it is on the edge of our Peters Creek Activity Center, which is further to the east, where you see a lot of red and brown and orange, and that was an area that the area plan kind of called out for intensification of uses. Next slide. So this is the site plan that was submitted with this request, and to get you oriented, Old Salisbury Road is to the top of this image, Jay Avenue is to the right side. So north is to the right in this image. And you can see the site plan proposes an access point off of Old Salisbury Road that comes through the site and then connects through to Jay Avenue, which I showed you, and that's a public street. What is being proposed is a three-story building, about 37,000 square feet in size, and it's a total of 84 units, which comes out to be just right under 10 units per acre. You can see the associated parking is shown there, stormwater is included, it will be to the bottom left of the image that you're looking at. Next slide. These are the building elevations that were submitted with this request. Next slide. So just a quick summary, the area plan, as I showed you before, does recommend single-family residential use for the site. As staff reviewed this, we found alternative sites in the nearby activity center that could accommodate this use. Staff also noted that the three-story building is a little out of scale and out of, it's not quite compatible with the nearby single-family homes. And as we always evaluate multifamily and higher density development, we try to find sites that are located on or near growth corridors, within an activity center, that have access to transit and that are walkable, and this site lacks a few of those characteristics and staffs. The site is adjacent to an existing senior living facility, so that is a positive. If you go to the next slide, Amy. This request was heard by the planning board, their May 28th meeting. We had one speaker in support and no opposition, the planning board voted seven to two to recommend approval of this request. And I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. King? Any questions for Mr. King? All right. Seeing none, I'll go back to Councilmember Larson for a motion, please.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion and some comments perhaps. All right. I move approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and two, W-3437.
Second. Motion second. Go ahead, Mr. Larson, with your comments.
This, anytime, anytime we start to jump the guardrails of a legacy or an area plan, you've got to sort of ask, you know, why are we doing this? And, and a lot of work has gone into it. And obviously, you know, I've deliberated over this quite a while because I value neighborhoods and I value the planning department that's gone into all the work for this. And looking at this particular case, it's right on the fringe basically of the area plan where we moved from multi-use family, multi, multi-dwelling uses over to single family uses. And in fact, this particular proposal actually is less than what's to the east of this project, which has, we're going to get another proposal later in this meeting, which is going to be another apartment development that is going to be a market rate apartment, which would be in conformance with other things that are going on to the east. The topography of this site is complex. It's a difficult hilly, heavily wooded area. It's, you know, I don't know whether it couldn't be developed in a single family dwelling or not. I do know that density is an issue to make it pay for itself probably. I just, I'm not a developer, but just thinking about how many units can go in. This is 84 occupancy units. And, and I think, but the more important thing is, and we can talk about the specifics, I don't think it's going to be highly difficult. It's down in a valley, 20 feet below the road grade and heavily wooded on, on the fringes. And I think it's going to be fairly, fairly discreet. And thinking about how it's going to impact the neighborhood, the population here is, is basically designed to be an elderly senior citizens group, which is I think going to be low traffic, low impact to the neighborhood. But most importantly, I think the issue facing council tonight is the question of are we going to put affordable housing in, in Winston-Salem and different parts of our city? And this, this particular project is 84 unit, excuse me, 84 units of affordable housing, that is 30 to 80% marker, median income levels, which means that particularly for fixed income senior citizens, this is an important aspect to fulfill, I think, a major gap that we have in our city housing. Whether we're going to have these throughout the city or whether we're going to isolate them in certain wards, I think is a question. I think in this particular case, it can fit nicely within the, within the geographical area that's going to be located and it's going to meet a need, meet a need for housing types that this city is desperately in need of. So within that, I think the need of the city basically trumps this particular modification of the area plan, which I do respect and would, would want to continue to honor that. But I just think that this is important enough for us to give a variance to that plan tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntosh?
Yeah, I appreciate John's thoughts and comments about helping to distribute kind of the load of where affordable housing occurs. I think that's great. Can I ask Aaron King about whether or not this is going to be a LITC project or is this going to require it to pass scrutiny and qualify on the matrix that we always see when we're talking about these kinds of projects? So if we approve this tonight, this thing is not necessarily going to get built, am I correct?
Councilmember McIntosh? I would defer to Mr. Tharrington, who's a developer on this. It's my understanding, I believe it's going into the application process and thus the needed deadline to get this heard by July 15th. But I would, if, if council would like to hear, I would defer to Mr. Tharrington if he could unmute himself and provide if, any insight as to whether or not he's applying for that process.
Thank you. To Tharrington, you were recognized.
Yes, sir. We are in the process of ma, this is an application to build and there's no guarantee that we will get it, though we feel very positive about it. The application is with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency and we will find out probably sometime in late August, hopefully, that whether or not we are awarded the project. But the, the list of total projects in the state has been published and we are high on that list, but it's sort of impossible to predict what the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency will do.
Thank you. I know, I know last year we had six scores of 100 in the county and only two projects were financed. So the project is needed. I, I welcome it, but I do have concerns about what this represents in that neighborhood. It is a stark departure from the surrounding properties. Clemensville Road east towards Peter's Creek Parkway is sort of carved out for high density. This is high density in a, in a low density area. So to me, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of this specifically because of the fact that it is a three-story project in a one-story neighborhood. I think a two-story project may have been more acceptable to me, but I understand that the economics may not work. Thank you.
Councilmember Bessie?
Thank you. This question probably goes to Mr. Tharrington and then I have a comment. Mr. Tharrington, if this is built under the application that you're making, will this be limited to seniors? Will it be restricted to those with disabilities?
Mr. Tharrington?
Yes, it is limited to, well, the, the state defines seniors as 55 and older. So anyone that lives there would have to be 55 and over. 10% of the, of the number of units would be specifically for handicapped people. They'll all be handicapped accessible, but will be designed for handicapped. And, but I will tell you from other places that I have built, the average person that lives in this facility is going to be about a 73-year-old widow. And that's not to say that they're not men in the facility too, but most of them, average age is about 73, 74 years old. And that's-
Thank you, Mr. Tharrington. Best have a comment?
Thank you for, yes, thank you for the clarification. I'm not troubled so much by the density or, and certainly not at all troubled by the affordable housing component. I, I do find concern in one of the, one of the comments in the record that it didn't need to be sidewalk accessible because of the average age of, of your typical tenant. I have found that we're getting, unless you're talking about specifically a disabled population, one of the amenities that seniors are increasingly seeking is walkability. And I would be concerned if we get into a pattern of not taking that into account in site design. And I know that it's specifically not taken into account here. So, you know, I, I, I will defer to the recommendation of the council member from Ward on the judgment call, but I would like to see us continue to seek walkability connections for projects. I'll just note by example that, you know, on, on a, a major road that the southward and the southwest share, we're in the process now of trying to retrofit with a very costly sidewalk, specifically because two council members before, Councilmember Larson, the representative of the area, said, well, we're not going to see demand for that walkability from residents here. And, and in fact, residents, including a number of the senior citizens who are living in those developments, have been calling for us to put in a sidewalk now for several years. And, you know, we're working to do that, but we're running into problems with the state and the, and the timing. So just a, a comment, I think, for general consideration, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Recipio?
Yes, I drove to this property today to just see it because I had concerns that it did not fit the legacy plan and that there were issues concerning it being multi-family in a major thoroughfare with sidewalks, et cetera. However, the topography of this land is quite unique. It drops off dramatically. And where these apartments would be built are behind a few houses that from the road, I believe they're going to not really be that visible. And I saw it as spitting in a lovely little niche back there behind those houses. The question or the concern I have is that we talk about walkability for seniors. I have some folks who live in Hunt Park off of Bathobra Park Road. It is behind a lot of apartments, almost isolated. The thing that the people love is that it is quiet, it is peaceful, it is affordable housing. And I believe those who are looking from 30 to 80% median income kind of housing are more concerned about affordability and safety and peace than can I walk to the store and do I have to hear all of that traffic? So though I was not in favor of this when I read about it, but when I went out and looked at the property, and I know it's important that we have affordable housing throughout this city. And we have a developer who's willing to take this land that probably could not be very, a very good investment for single family homes because of, of the lay of the land. And they didn't have any opposition from the neighborhood. So I think we have to think in terms of what's best overall for our community and the citizens, i.e. the seniors who would live there, and their lifestyle. So, and I did mention to Hunt Park because they don't, they're not on the WISDA. It's not easy to get the bus and move to an activity center. But I think we should consider this as a, a real opportunity to bring affordable housing throughout our neighborhoods, throughout our city.
Thank you. We do have a motion to approve this zoning. It's a roll call now. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Recipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntosh?
No.
Councilmember Parman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes seven to one. We'll go now to item Z4.
Item Z4, public hearing on zoning petition of John L. Dyson Senior, Phyllis Dyson and Nancy S. Wall from AG and RS20 to RS20S. Property is located on the north side of Tatchy Drive, east of Land Landing Drive, located in the southeast ward. Planning board recommends approval petition.
Mr. King, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item? It is a public hearing.
Mayor joins. We have one speaker signed up. It is the applicant Trent Adams.
All right. Since there is no opposition, I'm, if there, if there's no opposition, I would close the public hearing unless Mr. Adams wants to speak.
All right. I will close the public hearing then and certainly recognize that Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the clerk read, item Z4 is a routine request to zone 19.17 undeveloped acres of land from agricultural and RS20 to RS20 special use in order to accommodate for 34 lot single family subdivision. I like to point out that it's always been the goal of our community to invest in our local resources like parks, wrecks and businesses in order to create an environment that encourages new single family housing opportunities. We're excited for this new opportunity to provide quality housing that improves the property tax base in the southeast ward in the city of Winston-Salem. So with that being said, I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and two, W-3436.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll go to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Recipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Yes.
And Councilmember Parman?
Yes.
And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll now go to item Z5.
Item Z5, public hearing on zoning petition of James N. Howard and Curry E. Howard from RS9 to RM12 pass. Property is located on the east side of Stacker Place Boulevard, south of Stacker Philly Boulevard, located in the south ward, according to public petition.
Thank you. And by the way, I had a request to remind everyone to mute your, your mics if you're not speaking. We had, apparently getting some background noises there. Mr. King, do we have anyone who wishes to speak on this one?
Mayor joins. We have one person signed up to speak. It is the applicant Davis Ray.
All right. This, since there's no opposition, unless Mr. Ray wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ray, is that okay?
That is fine. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and then recognize Councilmember Larson.
I would like to make a motion, but I do have some comments. I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and two, W-3438.
Second. Motion second. Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
Yes, this, this has drawn some comment. It's certainly within keeping planning staff, planning board both recommended, but the comments that I've received on it regard mostly in sort of the issue of environmental impact, particularly with the foliage, the trees and the creek that runs through the site. And there seems to be very little information, and I'm not sure, this may be a question for planning staff, as to whether we look at the impacts that this has. Certainly there's a question of the water runoff and the retention pond, but I think what the concern particularly is, is the folia, defoliation that's occurring on tree saving and what, what impact that has on the creek and watershed issues. Maybe staff comment on that aspect of these developments?
Mr. King, could you comment on that? I'm sure you do, you do a water retention study, I'm sure, but-
Yes, Mayor joins and Councilmember Larson, yes. So that's absolutely looked at as part of the review process and there's two components. One is the grading of the site and the applicant does have to comply with the tree ordinance that's in the UDO that council adopted several years ago and, and they, they have done that. The second piece of that is handling the runoff that comes from the site. And in this case, just like any development, it has to comply with chapter 75 of the city code with respect to stormwater runoff. And so what you see at this stage is a conceptual design that shows where stormwater will go and how it will be handled. What will come in at the time before a grading permit can be issued to the applicant is detailed engineered drawings will have to be submitted to the stormwater division to verify in detail how they're going to handle that stormwater and, and they won't be able to get a grading permit until they've satisfied our stormwater staff. So at this level, they have done what they need to do to satisfy both of those requirements. And on the back end, we will check in the field to make sure those, those tree save areas are marked and not graded. And then our stormwater staff will make sure the detailed engineering plans comply with chapter 75.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Larson, any other comments?
I, I think that's it. I, I think offline I'll talk a little bit more about tree saving.
All right. Very good. We'll go to the roll call then. The Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parman?
Yes.
And that's unanimous there. So we'll now go to item Z6.
Item Z6, public hearing on zoning petition of James N. Howard and Curry E. Howard from RS9 to RM12 pass. Property is located on the east side of Stacker Place Boulevard, south of Stacker Philly Boulevard, located in the south ward, according to public petition.
Thank you. And by the way, I had a request to remind everyone to mute your, your mics if you're not speaking. We had, apparently getting some background noises there. Mr. King, do we have anyone who wishes to speak on this one?
Mayor joins. We have one person signed up to speak. It is the applicant Davis Ray.
All right. This, since there's no opposition, unless Mr. Ray wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ray, is that okay?
That is fine. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and then recognize Councilmember Larson.
I would like to make a motion, but I do have some comments. I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and two, W-3438.
Second. Anyone want to speak?
This is Brighton Trent. Said, no, we don't. We're simply here to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Well, I'll close the public hearing then and recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. Uh, I'll just speak briefly. Item Z six is a request to amend the official zoning map from institutional and public to general business special use. Uh, the petitioner is requesting to use this facility as Group Care Facility C. Uh, for those who aren't familiar with the project, this is the site of the former Winston-Salem Air Force Radar Station, which was constructed in nineteen fifty-six, and it's the current home of ARCA, which is a drug addiction rehab uh, facility, a recovery facility, rather. Uh, the proposed location would be the new home of TROSA, uh, which is a highly successful long-term residential recovery program based in Durham. Uh, it's my opinion, and I think it's a fact, that TROSA is going to help us to lead the fight to address the drug and opioid epidemic in the city, state, and the country. Um, I think it's really a blessing to have them here, and they've been looking to expand in Winston-Salem for some time now. Uh, we did hold a community meeting at the location on March the twelfth. Uh, we had a few residents to stop by with some questions and ultimately with support for the project. And with TROSA's track record of success, uh, I think we'll have one of the best drug treatment facilities in the country right here in the southeast ward in the city of Winston-Salem. So with that said, I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W dash three, four, three, nine.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Not going to roll call. Councilperson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Yes.
And Councilmember Parman.
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. We'll now go to item Z seven.
Item Z seven, public hearing on zoning petition of Site Plan Amendment of Walkover Bay in A for additional accessory structures on site previously approved for Services A in a GOS zoning district. Property is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Sunny Old Court and Silas Creek Parkway, located in the north ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. King, do we have any one wishing to be heard on this one?
Mayor joins. We have three speakers signed up, Brent Thomas, Joseph Rogers, and Bart Sergeant. They are all proponents of this case. No one has signed up in opposition.
Thank you. Uh, since there's no one in opposition, I'll close the hearing unless one of the proponents or the proponents want to speak.
Hi, this is Bart Sergeant. Uh, we're just here to answer questions, so if you guys have any questions, we're happy to field those.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll therefore close the public hearing and recognize Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W three, four, four, zero.
Second. Thank you. Motion second. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Clark.
Ms. Adams, I'm having a hard time, and I drive down this road every day identifying where this property is.
You know what Brighton Garden is?
Uh huh.
It's back behind there. If you have to go back to Sunny Old Court. You can come in from Renolda, you can come in from Polo, or you can come in from Silas Creek, and it'll take you right there to the facility.
Thank you.
Very, very high security.
Yes.
That's a good facility there, for sure. Well, thank you. We'll go to the roll call to approve this item. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Parman.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll go to item Z eight.
Item Z eight, public hearing on zoning petition of WR Vernon Curtis Company, IH eight fifty Trade LLC and Industry Hill Properties LLC from LI to PBL. Property is located on the east side of North Trade Street, between West Eighth Street and West Tenth Street, located in the north ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is there anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Mayor joins. We have two speakers, Porter Jones and Luke Dickey. They are both proponents. We have no one signed up in opposition.
Thank you. Since there's no opposition, I'll close the public hearing unless proponents wish to be heard.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This is Luke Dickey with St. Michael Associates. We're excited about this upcoming project and just here to answer any questions if you have them.
All right, thank you very much. I'll therefore close the public hearing and recognize Councilmember Adams.
Yes, uh, members, Mayor, uh, I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W three, four, four, one.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
I do.
Where Parman?
Um, Mayor and council members, so one of my questions, because I have a two-part question. So the first question is, when I was looking at the agenda, I didn't see the actual site plan of what it's going to look like in that area. And then number two is, did they reach out to everyone in like a five mile radius to get their input, um, whether it's a business or resident, to see everyone's input on that particular plan? Because again, I didn't see a site plan, and I may have overlooked it if I did. Somebody feel free to correct me, but I didn't personally see one.
Mr. King, can you comment on that, please?
Yes, um, Councilmember Parman, this is a special use limited request, and with a special use limited request, the applicant is not required to submit a site plan. So um, with special use limited requests, they, they choose the zoning district, they submit their proposed land uses, and then um, conditions can be attached to that, but they're not required to submit a site plan. So that's why you didn't see one on this case, whereas you may have seen some on the other cases um, that have, that have come through. With respect to the outreach to the folks in the surrounding areas, um, I may defer to Mr. Dickey on that. They did, um, our, our UDO requires that applicants reach out to folks, and I may, um, and we leave that discretion up to the applicants as far as, you know, how far that outreach is and, and under what's, you know, method that occurs. So I may defer to Mr. Dickey, so he can provide a comment on that as far as what they did with respect to neighborhood outreach.
Mr. Dickey, could you comment on your outreach for this particular zoning?
Yes, Councilmember Parman. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we did reach out to people within five hundred feet. We sent a letter describing what the proposal was for. Uh, we did receive comments and questions from two individuals. They, they called. We provided them my, my uh, phone number to call and ask any questions, and so we were able to answer the questions in regards to that. So we did send out some notification to the neighbors in the surrounding area.
So one, one more question, and I'd be out of your way.
Go ahead, Mr.
Back to Mr. King. So pretty much this um, zoning would be pretty much like an open blank check for them to be able to do whatever it is that they want to do for that area without any restrictions per se.
Councilmember Parman, what tonight's action would do if it is approved is it would set the zoning district in place, and it would limit the property owners or the applicants to only the, the, the land uses included in this request. So those would be the only land uses allowed on the site. And then with respect to site design, they would still have to comply with all other requirements of the UDO. So whether it be parking, or setbacks, or height, or stormwater, or landscaping, they would still have to comply with all of those um, uh, measures, minimum requirements of the UDO.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Cipio.
Uh, yes, I would like Mr. Dickey to tell me what the developer has in mind for this site. I know this has lots of different uses, but um, one of them is a private swimming pool. Um, I'm not sure if that's what they have in mind for there, but is it possible that it give us an idea of what they have in mind for this special use, even though it may not come to pass as they may present it right now?
Mr. Dickey, could you have a brief comment on that?
Yeah, so Councilmember Cipio, it's a good question. Uh, right now, the plan is for an apartment, most uh, market rate. Uh, so this is the same developer that did the Weston Station project and the easily apartments that are currently under construction at the ballpark. Uh, so that's the intent uh, for the development.
Thank you. But that gets you covered, Miss Cipio.
Uh, so that would fall under residential building duplex, residential building, single family or residential building. That's, that's where that falls into that special use.
The, the specific land use, Councilmember Cipio, for that would be residential building multifamily.
I don't see it on this list. Okay, if, yeah, it may just be missing from the list that's here. But thank you, Mr. King. Just double check.
All right, thank, thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Parman.
We do have a motion to approve this rezon- oh, excuse me, Councilmember Adams.
Yes, um, Mr. Dickey, could you kind of tell them uh, how many units we're talking about? And unfortunately, it's market rate, but the point is we're creating density housing and more housing for the city of Winston-Salem.
Mr. Dickey.
Yes, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, yes, that's a, the plan is for roughly around two hundred and forty units, uh, a mixture of basically one, two bedroom, and a few three bedroom units, and also a little small component of townhouses. Overall investment is looking at around forty-five million dollars um, on this four acre tract of land, um, that area. So that's a, it's pretty good high density um, in regards to what we could fit in, in that small area.
And Mayor, thank you, Mr. Dickey. Mayor, members of the council, uh, some of you that have called me, uh, I have to say this, that uh, in spite of COVID and the economy and uh, social injustice is going down, one of the things that we still have to work on is housing in the city of Winston-Salem as well as across the whole country. Uh, we also, as the council and the governing body, has to create, to help create the housing, hopefully through public-private partnerships, and if not, the fact that we still have to build. Uh, we have to keep that in front of us. I also want the council and the public to know that unlike two thousand nine and two thousand ten and eleven, it's our responsibility also to try to create uh, revenue tax base. Right now, with the economy the way it is, and us looking at our, our steer measure, measures for our budget, again, every city in the country is in the same shape right now. So when we, if the mayor and some of the members of the council remember back in oh nine and ten, when we lost all the jobs, lost the housing market, development, uh, one of our main goals was to try to still uh, create a city and an environment of business, community development, social services, and everything else that would want, people would want to live in the city, but thrive in the city as well. So I want to thank each and every one of you that are going to support this. Uh, we haven't had a multifamily apartment development in the north ward uh, of this size in a while, even though we got enclave, uh, that finished base two. Uh, the north ward is known for all of our multifamily units, and we, we take that and, and run with it with pride uh, from market rates to affordable. Uh, so again, thank you all for that support.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve this zoning. Uh, we'll go to roll call. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Parman. Councilmember Parman.
Yes, I don't know what's going on, my thing.
All right. Very good. That was unanimous. Uh, thank you, and we'll, I agree with Councilmember Adams. We'll take a forty-five million dollar investment. Uh, we can use it for sure. We're going to go to item Z nine.
Item Z nine, public hearing on zoning petition of Zynet Management LLC from RS nine to RM five S. Property is located on the west side of Everett Road across from Silver Lane, located in the south ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
Thank you, uh, Mr. King. Anyone to sign up to speak on this item?
Mayor joins. Steve Causey has signed up. He is the applicant. No one has signed up in opposition.
Thank you. Since there's no opposition, I'll close the public hearing unless the applicant would like to make a comment. All right, I'll close the public hearing then, and I'll recognize Councilmember Larson.
Yes, um, I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W thirty-four, forty-two.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Clark.
I mean, this is the third one in the south ward today. The first one I had, the third one had to do with um, or the first one had to do with affordable housing, uh, which I thought was good. Thank you, council members, for approving that. The second one was council, was dealt with market rate apartments, uh, another seventy-two units. And this is a owner occupied uh, duplex, complex of thirty-six different units. So we got a hundred and nine units approved in the south ward tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Go to the roll call. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Parman.
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. And now we'll go to item Z eleven.
Item Z eleven, public hearing on resolution adopting a disadvantaged business enterprise program for the city of Winston-Salem and all boards and committees.
Thank you. We recognize Assistant City Manager Damon DuKane for a brief comment on the, this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the city council. Uh, this item before you is to formally adopt a disadvantaged business enterprise plan. Um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to your Director of Transportation, Ms. Tanique McCullough, uh, to provide some additional detail and answer any questions you may have.
Ms. McCullough.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh, Mayor Pro Tim and members of city council. Uh, just briefly, the Federal Transit Administration completed a triennial review of um, the city of Winston-Salem and Winston-Salem Transit Authority's services in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, during that review, they determined that our DBE plan that we've had in place uh, was a plan that was uh, specific to our contractor uh, in Wista and was not the city's plan. So they um, required that we develop a plan specifically for the city, since the city is the direct recipient of the federal funds. Uh, what you have before you is a plan that was developed. Uh, it has been reviewed by the Federal Transit Administration, and they have found that the plan is in compliance with their requirements. Um, the steps are for us to have city council, um, the Winston-Salem Transit Authority Board, and the um, the Winston-Salem Urban Area MPO to adopt this plan. Um, we will also be required to develop goals um, that will then come before uh, all three committees. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. McCullough? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
I just wanted, let me close the public hearing. Oh, yeah, I don't understand. No one has signed up to speak, so we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Councilmember Clark, you made a motion, I believe.
Yes, to approve. Thank you.
Second. Thank you. Any discuss? All right, go in, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Adams.
Yes, uh, Ms. McCullough, is it possible that we can get an update on this every six months or something as to how we're going, how we're doing it? Are we fulfilling our compliance uh, task?
Yes, ma'am. We can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. A motion to approve this. Uh, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Parman.
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. And now item uh, Z twelve.
Item Z twelve, public hearing on resolution adopting a Title Six plan for the city of Winston-Salem and all boards and committees.
Thank you. Again, I would like to call Assistant Manager DuKane for a comment.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the city council. Uh, this public hearing and item are, are in similar nature to the previous. And again, I'll call on your Director of Transportation, McCullough, to provide some detail and answer any questions you may have.
Ms. McCullough, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tim and uh, city council members. Uh, this item is similar to the DBE plan uh, in which we had a Title Six plan that was adopted by the Winston-Salem Transit Authority. Uh, we were made aware that the city uh, by the Winston-Salem Transit Authority. Uh, we were made aware that the city, uh, also needs to have an adopted plan that has, uh, been approved since the city is the recipient of federal funding. Uh, the plan that you have is, um, a plan that, um, FTA has, um, reviewed and determined that we are in compliance. And so we, uh, bring it before you. We will also have the same plan adopted by the TAC and the Winston-Salem Transit Authority.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, we will, uh, uh, need a motion on this item, please. I would like to, to, to close the public hearing.
Second.
Oh, we, that's, you're good. We got a motion and a second as we jointly closed the public hearing and made a motion. Which is good. All right, we go to the roll call. Uh, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parman?
Yes.
And that is unanimous. We'll go to item Z. 13.
Item Z. 13, public comment period.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes, ma'am. I have one question. Um, does the city have a non-discrimination plan for other departments that we receive federal funds? This one specifically for Department of Transportation. Like, do we have one for HUD?
Councilwoman, I mean, Assistant Manager DuKane, uh, you want to comment on that?
Uh, that's an excellent question. Again, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Members of the City Council. Uh, I, I don't know that, I, I don't know the answer to that, ma'am. I would have to get back to you. Uh, this point, it may be able to apply to them, but I don't want to miss you.
Thank you.
Information back to Councilwoman Cipio. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item Z. 13, please.
Item Z. 13, public comment period.
Again, this is a time we, uh, uh, set aside 30 minutes and invite citizens to, uh, make comments to the mayor and City Council on matters that are germane to city government. Uh, would ask that you would give your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, first person we had signed up is Amy Badge Beck.
Hello, uh, my name is Amy Beck, and I live at 710 Washington Avenue. Um, I just had a couple of questions, um, tonight. Um, one is regarding item Z. 2, um, where the funds are being allocated from CARES and HUD to the homeless population. Um, but there were demonstrations made this week, um, protesting the allowing of ongoing evictions in Winston-Salem, um, while we're still in a pandemic. And, um, my question is, are these funds, um, coming from CARES and HUD also available for citizens, um, facing evictions? And is there specific, specific information we could get for aiding these citizens with, um, some of those funds?
We'll be happy to make those, uh, the information available, Ms. Beck. Can we make sure we get Ms. Beck's contact information and we'll make sure that you get that information?
Thank you. I have one more question if there's.
Please, go ahead.
Um, I appreciate, um, Councilmember Larson's and McIntosh's, uh, speaking, um, about the developments that are meant for multifamily housing, um, that they be affordable for low and median income families. Um, and like making sure that they also have access to public transportation, grocery stores, um, and have walking access. I, like, as a citizen, just want to say that's important to me as well, to see that my fellow citizens of Winston-Salem are, um, receiving the same access, um, that I have and, and thankful for. Um, one of the goals, um, stated under Legacy 2030 is to provide a diversity of residential options in Winston-Salem, which I love to see. Um, but I don't see much diversity in affordable housing downtown. Um, and I ask that you, uh, Councilmembers consider that we are, if we're restricting people's access to our city centers potentially perceived for good reasons, um, we are also pushing diverse and thriving culture away from our city. And I personally don't want to see that happen. So I just wanted to, um, make that note and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. I appreciate it. Is there, uh, anyone else on the public comment? I said, I don't believe we have anyone else, so I will close the public comment period, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless Councilmember has some, uh, comment.
I'll adjourn.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Adams, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, go ahead.
I want to let the public know that we won't meet again until next month.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. We, uh, we are, this is actually a special meeting that we call, and we normally do not meet in July, but we are, next meeting will be August the 3rd. Uh, we may have a, a, a hybrid, uh, virtual and in-person, but we'll, we'll, we'll be working on that. So thank you all very much. We do have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye. Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you.